Welcome to the December Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. I'd just like to make one comment before we get started regarding masks. Everyone, per the governor's mandate and a notice from our executive county superintendent, must wear a mask at a public board meeting and must keep it on throughout the entire meeting. With that being said, the Hoboken Board of Education respects the opinions of all speakers. And with that being said, before we do get started, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy holiday season. It's hard to believe that it's upon us already, but we hope you enjoy the time with your family and friends. Okay, Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper notice, proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 26, 2020, and January 2, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clubful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simons.
Here.
Ms. Takirian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Well, first, we will start off with our student recognition portion of the meeting, so I'd like to call up our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty families, Hoboken community, and of course, the most important, our students and their support team, their families, who are joining us tonight. It is my honor to stand before you today and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium to celebrate and share detailed information and anecdotes about why these students are being honored here. Our students have truly excelled and remained their most focused. They embody the Thomas Edison quote, "There is no substitute for hard work." Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the very hard work of these five fantastic students. As is our process, we will begin with Joseph F. Brandt Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium, and then, of course, pause and pose for a picture. He will then introduce the Connors Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow this same pattern in introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, tonight being represented by Vice Principal Lawrence, Mara, and Principal Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School, respectfully, respectively, pardon. Thank you for your attention tonight, and with that, I would invite Principal Bartlett to the podium.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and at this time, I would ask Maya Steinfeld to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Maya Steinfeld, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for November 2021. Maya was nominated by her fifth-grade homeroom teacher, Mrs. Delafave. Ms. Delafave said Maya is new to Brant and has done a wonderful job adjusting to her new environment. She is kind, considerate, and dedicated to being a great student. I am proud to recommend Maya for this award. Mrs. Delafave's words about Maya being a great student are 100% accurate. Each time I see Maya hard at work when I pass through her class to visit, her quiet confidence sets the ultimate example for her peers and classmates. She is a role model for both her fifth-grade friends and our younger students alike. She approaches each task with a positive attitude, has fun along the way, and gets the job done in fantastic fashion. This is validated and reflected in the fact that Maya has achieved outstanding grades during marking period one due to her diligence, hard work, and intrinsic motivation. Her work ethic extends beyond the classroom, as outside of school, Maya is an active member of the Studio L dance team, where she rehearses every day after school and even on the weekends. Maya is extremely thoughtful and caring. She is always eager to help a classmate or teacher, no matter the task. Making friends comes naturally to her because of her positive attitude and warm personality. She greets their questions in a way that benefits all and has established herself as a resource in the classroom for both her classmates and her teacher. Maya said, "My favorite subjects are math and art, and I love to dance. This year, I've really enjoyed playing the clarinet. A fun fact about me is I have been dancing since I was two years old. When I am older, I want to own a successful dance studio." It makes total sense that Maya's goals and aspirations would have her sharing her gifts and talents with others, as she is so apt and willing to do that now. This will no doubt lead to her continued success on whatever path she chooses to take. Maya said the following when told she would receive this honor. "I am extremely happy to be getting this recognition because it's been a lifelong dream of mine. I am very happy to have gotten this achievement, and thank you for this award. Maya, I have a feeling that this will be the first of many awards to come. We are proud of you, and we are so grateful that you've joined our Brant School family." Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Maya Steinfeld, our Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month for November 2021. At this time, I would like to call up the Principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Principal Juliana Addy.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. At this time, I would like to call up Nicholas Pickerell, the T.G. Connors Student of the Month. Nicholas Pickerell is a third-grade student in Ms. Hall's class who makes his classroom and Connors Elementary School a better place. His integrity, kindness, and thoughtfulness, and driven personality make him a role model for his classmates. Nicholas reflects on the six pillars of character daily and demonstrates this reflection through the way he interacts with his teachers and classmates. Nicholas is a member of Homeroom 309, who can always be caught doing the right thing, even when no one is watching. He is a reliable student who has the courage to stand up for what's right and lead by example. He is constantly caught pushing in a friend's chair, lending a helping hand, and offering Ms. Hall advice on how to work the RICO Board, which she is extremely grateful for. One of Nicholas's classmates said that playful, kind, and caring would be the first three adjectives that come to mind when describing Nicholas, but your friend could go on all day with amazing adjectives to describe you. The student added, "He's very smart and never gives up easily." It is clear that his classmates respect Nicholas's kind heart and academic drive. Nicholas's strengths also include the pride he takes in his academics. Nicholas has demonstrated mastery of third-grade skills such as multiplication, division, and modeling with data. He works diligently to think algebraically and challenge himself with above-grade-level content. Nicholas works with Ms. Barsakova during his ILP periods. Ms. Barsakova shared that Nicholas Pickerell is a very diligent, respectful, and creative student. He has an incredible zest for learning and knowledge that shows in how he delivers his reasoning when answering questions and the way he completes his activities. He's very respectful toward everyone and always works diligently to successfully complete his activities. Nicholas has great ideas about different topics and shows an ability to think outside the box that helps him complete his work with creativity in mind. Nicholas's love for learning will help him succeed in the future and achieve anything he sets his mind to. Nicholas shared that his dreams include going to Stevens Institute of Technology and living with some friends. He's unsure what he wants to do as a career, but his favorite subjects are math, science, and physical education. Ms. Hall is so proud to be Nicholas's teacher and looks forward to watching him continue to make the world a better place. Ms. Gia shared that Nicholas is a leader and a model for Mandarin class. He always makes his best effort in whatever he does and always takes pride in his work. Mr. Azardo shared that Nicholas loves music. His ability to grasp new music theory concepts is amazing. Every time his class is assigned a music theory lesson, Nicholas is one of the first students to complete his work. Not only does Nicholas excel in music theory, he has a passion for singing that is so uplifting and filled with joy. His pitch is almost perfect; he never forgets a lyric. Mr. Azardo said that he is so fortunate to have the opportunity to work with Nicholas as a music student, and he looks forward to seeing him and hearing him grow as a musician. Mr. Favino said that Nicholas has been an absolute pleasure to have in physical education class. He excels in any new concept that we try in class and is someone whose peers can refer to for help. Nicholas has consistently strived to better himself in phys ed by asking for feedback and always showing enthusiasm. He is so deserving of this award. Ms. Kapabell shared that Nicholas shows the essence of an exceptional art student. He is a leader among his peers and takes the initiative by jumping fearlessly into new artwork or material. Nicholas goes the extra mile in the risks he takes during his art-making and creative time. He is constantly offering feedback to his peers and taking constructive criticism head-on in order to enhance his skills. I asked Nicholas's mom what she was most proud of. She said that she is proud of the person that Nicholas is. He is so kind to his sister Hazel. He reads to her every night. They have a very special relationship. She also shared that he always puts his all into everything he does and that he always wants to make it outstanding. I asked Nicholas how he felt when he found out that he was Student of the Month. He said that he felt both excited and proud, yet slightly confused. He felt that there are so many amazing students at Connors, and he was surprised that he was the one picked. One of the traits that we did not share yet about you is how humble you are. Nicholas, you are truly so special. We are just so proud of you, and you should be so proud of yourself. You have all of the koalas of a Connors koala. You are respectful, trustworthy, caring, responsible, fair, and are a great citizen. We are so proud of you. We cannot wait to see all the things that you will accomplish, and we look forward to watching you continue to make the world a better place. If everyone could give a round of applause for Nicholas Pickerell. At this time, I'd like to introduce Liz Lawrence, the Vice Principal of Wallace.
Good evening. At this time, Nicholas Moreno, would you please join me at the podium? We're very excited to take this opportunity to celebrate an extraordinary Wildcat and Wallace's November Student of the Month, Nicholas Moreno. Nico is a third grader who was nominated by his homeroom teacher, Mr. Fernandez, for his exceptional effort and compassion for others. Mr. Fernandez has been Nico's teacher for the past two years and shared that Nicholas is not only a model scholar for the classroom, but also a role model for the entire Wallace community. Nico is a hard worker and embraces challenges, persists in the face of setbacks, and enjoys learning new skills. Additionally, Nico enjoys learning from others as well as learning from his mistakes. In the words of Nico, "I make mistakes so I can learn. That's how I stretch my brain." Nicholas is friendly to all and can often be seen motivating and encouraging his classmates to do their best. If a job needs to be done, Nico is the first to volunteer. He strives to do his best work and is always willing to lend a helping hand to others. Both Mistress and Ms. Christine agree Nicholas is a good friend to all. Nico is happiest when playing with his best friends, Jake, Celeste, and Oliver. When asked about Nico, Jake said, "Nico's great! He's so wonderful, he's fun to play with, and he's good, helpful, and kind." Celeste also commented about Nico, saying, "He's a good friend, and I love him because he reads me stories." Nicholas loves to read, both to others and independently. Among his favorite books are Frankenstein, Flat Stanley, and Dogman. Ms. Louise, a fair professional in his classroom, commented on how much Nicholas has grown and shared that humor is among one of his many talents. Nico enjoys the show Teen Titans, playing video games on his Nintendo Switch, and Super Mario Maker 2, which is by far one of his favorites. Nico's also a true Pokemon master. He's even memorized the entire first generation of the series. A few other fun facts about Nico. He speaks Spanish and Portuguese and is very proud of his Brazilian heritage. When Nicholas grows up, he wants to be either a police officer or a pilot. Nicholas was speechless when he learned the news that he was Student of the Month. When I asked him what he'd like to share with all of you tonight, he said, "That you're the best!" Well, Nico, you are the best, and we're very happy to be celebrating you tonight. Please join us in congratulating our November Student of the Month, Nicholas Moreno, for demonstrating what it means to roar as a Wildcat. Thank you all. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Pica Pietra. I can always say your name wrong. Principal of Hoboken High School. Sorry about that, wrong.
Don't worry about it. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up Antonio Siochi, Senior at Hoboken High School. What an amazing student and an amazing choice for our Student of the Month. Antonio is kind, respectful, intelligent, and an all-around great kid. Liked by everyone he meets, he continues to be a great example of a Red Wing. If I had a projector, I would share with you a snapshot of his academic history, which will demonstrate a student who has never missed honors or high honors in his four years at Hoboken High School. Antonio has been challenging himself in AP courses since his freshman year with AP World History, and he does not disappoint as a senior with two AP classes in his schedule. He boasts a GPA over 4.0, which makes sense for him to be in the National Honor Society. He is an active member of the student government, and soccer was his sport. He made the Athletic Directors List every year he played. Little-known secret, Antonio volunteers at the Hoboken Homeless Shelter regularly, as he is a young man who chooses to give back, which makes him even that much more dynamic. I'd like to share what a few people have shared with me. Ms. Pogo said, "I have had Antonio since his freshman year, and he has always demonstrated how caring, hardworking, and kind he is. His positive attitude is very helpful and motivating in class. He asks questions, holds himself accountable, and I'm excited to see what future holds for him. It's very well deserved." Mr. Wanko said, "Antonio is a mature young man who does not shirk responsibility. He always completes the task at hand. His thirst for knowledge is apparent, and he diligently works to make sure he succeeds at whatever is put before him." I think Mr. Naharo said it beautifully. The title Student of the Month is well-deserved for Antonio. Along with being a responsible and respectful student, Antonio works hard to make sure he's submitting his best work in AP US Government and Politics. Antonio currently has a grade of 91 with every single assignment submitted, submitted on time, and done well. Antonio is one of the few students that consistently shows an eagerness to want to engage in classroom discussions. Overall, he is a joy to have in class and work with. I am happy to see him honored as Student of the Month. Ms. Chekov said that Antonio dedicated a lot of time to his college essay at the start of the school year. He worked during lunch to ensure that it was his very best. He is dedicated to being optimistic, and he comes to school to perform his best at everything he does. So I decided to ask Antonio a few questions because I wanted to hear a few words from him. His best experience at Hoboken High School is the spirit days. He has a lot of fun participating and getting into character and working with his friends and peers. He is said he is driven by just being confident in himself and always doing his best, even when he is struggling. He has applied to a few colleges, and I asked if there was a dream college, and he said he would be happy wherever he goes. He is interested in pursuing the field of computer science. He loves hanging out with his family and friends, watching shows and movies, and I cannot blame him because his family is pretty awesome. His friends would describe him as a quiet person, but overall a nice person who could want more. Mr. Munoz is thrilled to have Antonio on student government this year because he is positive and a driving force and has emerged as a student leader and a leader within the Class of 2022 Class Council. He is the epitome of hashtag Red Wing leadership. We know great things are coming your way, Antonio. Keep up the great work and congratulations. Forgive me, I usually back cleanup, so I apologize. We did a little audible here. So I'd like to introduce the Principal of Hoboken Middle School to present her Student of the Month.
I wanted to give my Student of the Month a few extra minutes today because he was running late, and it is my pleasure to introduce Jake Stefora, the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for November 2021. Nominated by several of his teachers, Jake is described as hard-working, respectful, collaborative, sweet, and kind. Jake's reaction to receiving this honor, "I am very proud of myself." You definitely should be. Jake participates in many extracurricular activities, including archery, flag football, soccer, Minecraft coding, and is in the upcoming Hoboken Middle School Play Team. Jake is truly a well-rounded student. His favorite subject is science. He says he really enjoys the topics they learn about. Additionally, Jake likes to read for pleasure. He's a member of the Hoboken Middle School Literary Club last year, and his favorite book is Diary of a Wimpy Kid. Jake really enjoys the way the author writes and how funny the series is. Jake's teachers had this to say about him. Ms. Episcopo shared Jake is a wonderful student and truly embodies an active learner. He is always eager to participate in small group and whole group discussions as well as sharing his learning reflections. Furthermore, Jake connects his strategies to other strategies, which supports higher levels of thinking. Jake's ability to work with any peer and remain on tasks speaks to his level of maturity and dedication to learning. Ms. Rozmester said Jake is a very respectful, responsible, and cooperative student. I can always count on Jake to have his hand raised. He does a great job at participating in class discussion and providing engaging and thoughtful responses. Jake is very kind-hearted and is always willing to lend a helping hand. He is a positive role model and a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Demyo added Jake is a great student on and off the playing field in phys ed. On the field, Jake always shows what maximum participation and effort looks like and how to be a great team player. Off the court, Jake is a great leader on how to conduct yourself when not playing. He shows great sportsmanship and wants others in class to succeed. Jake has also done a great job in the health classroom, always completing his assignments and never hesitating to volunteer and answer to a question, showing great confidence. Jake would like to go to Temple University and hopes to become a professional football coach. Why a football coach, you might ask? Jake enjoys calling the plays and controlling all the action on the field. Jake's closest friends are Ali, Angel, and Nikolai. Ali had this to say about Jake. Jake is a great guy. I've known him since third grade. He is nice, respectful, and listens to everybody. Jake cares about everyone. Ali said he enjoys going over to Jake's house, doing homework together, and talking about football. Jake is an accomplished skier, and it is his favorite winter activity to do with his family. He really likes going on vacation and has been snorkeling in Mexico and has even seen a seal on the beach in Nantucket. When not snorkeling in the summer or hitting the slopes in the winter, Jake enjoys biking, rollerblading, and spending time with his dog, a mini poodle named Spencer. Jake describes him as "very crazy and cute at the same time." Jake likes to spend time at Piercy, and his favorite restaurant in town is Choritos. Fun fact about Jake, his birth date is January 23rd, which translates to 123, which he shares with everybody. Jake's parents couldn't be prouder of him. Jake's mom and dad wanted to share, "We were so happy to hear that you were selected as overall Student of the Month. Of course, we have been so proud of your accomplishments over the last few years, including making high honors several times. You are always so adventurous and always willing to do different things, even if it means you have to learn some new skills. Now, with being named Student of the Month for Hoboken Middle School, we can see how all of your hard work has paid off. We are so proud of you, Jake, and look forward to sharing this honor with you." Well, we're all excited to share it with you, Jake. Please join me in congratulating Jake as our Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for November. Congratulations to all of our students recognized. We're so proud of you and look forward to seeing what the future holds for each of you. At this time, I'd like to call up Kendall McDonough of the Hoboken High School Student Government.
Hello, my name is Kendall McDonough. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. It is an honor to speak to you this evening. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Activities Office had a very productive and busy month. This past month, with successful morning announcements program, participation- participation in the Hoboken Public School District, Winter Wonderland Family Literacy and Art Night, class council, council meetings, and organizational meetings, successful food drive, and Red Wing on the Shelf scavenger hunt. Our first annual Student Government induction ceremony was a huge success. Sixty-three students were sworn into Student Government positions. It was an amazing experience. The Student Government has created committees to work with the Hoboken High School Administration. There are eight standing committees with everything from dress code and lunch, and lunch to governance and fundraising. Fourth Annual Powderpuff Game. The Fourth Annual Powderpuff Game was postponed to, to inclement weather and will be, will be rescheduled for sometime in March. Toy Drive. The Red Wing Cares, the Red Wing Cares is hosting a holiday toy drive. The Hoboken community can donate toys and drop them off to Hoboken High School. The drive is being held until Wednesday, December twenty-second. All toys will be donated to Sergeant Peter Peachey Zanin Toy Drive in partnership with the Hoboken Police Department. And finally, to round out this report, our monthly luncheon with the Hoboken High School Administration will be held on Monday, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at twelve forty-five PM. Now I would like to present to you with our, with our holiday greeting cards for you and your families. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, and we will, we look forward to you, to seeing you at future events. Go Red Wings! At this time, I'd like to call up the Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club President, Maria Mastro Giovanni.
Good evening. My name is Maria Mastro Giovanni. I'm president of the Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club. As you know, every year, the Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club conducts our Holiday Random Acts of Kindness. It is something we do for our school and Hoboken communities. Today is day fourteen of our Random Acts of Kindness calendar. Today is Thank an Elected Official Day. Club members have sent videos, messages to elected officials through social media, but I chose to come here and thank you in person. You, the school board, approve policy for our district. Mr. Munoz has taught us to pay attention to what is going on around us. I watch, I pay attention. What I have noticed is that this Board of Education cares and is involved. Mr. Munoz has told me how difficult it is to be a board of member. So I say, I'm really sorry. But thank you for all that you do. Every major event we have, you are there, and I wanted to say we notice. As a token of the Hispanic Culture Club's esteem and respect, I would like to present you with our annual Feliz Navidad cards. We do this every year to spread the holiday cheer and kindness that we feel in our hearts. The holiday season is a strong tradition in the Latino community, and as a proud Latina, I would like to say to you simply, thank you and Feliz Navidad.
Thank you both for coming, for your updates and your kind words, and please come back and visit us again sometimes really soon. Okay, at this time, we are going to take a short recess. So if any families need to leave, kids need to get home to do homework. If anyone would like to provide a comment or ask a question in relation to the proposed new high school plan, please use this time to sign up at the podium to speak. Comments and questions will take place during the public comment portion of our meeting after the presentation. So we'll take a few minutes and then we'll get started. Okay, we are going to get started with the presentation portion of our meeting, which is why you're all here tonight. As you all know, on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Hoboken voters will decide on a proposal by the Hoboken Board of Education to approve a thirty-year, two hundred and forty-one million dollar bond for the construction of a new high school. The proposed building is part of an overall plan to address the long-term need for school facilities necessitated by Hoboken's rapidly growing population, a one hundred and eighty percent increase since nineteen ninety, and the resulting student enrollment growth in the Hoboken Public School District. There are, for example, one thousand seventy new one, two, and three-bedroom residential units currently before the planning and zoning boards. Development of the northwest section of Hoboken is expected over the next decade. This facility proposal prepares the Hoboken Public School District for ongoing and anticipated residential development and population growth. The district currently operates three elementary schools, kindergarten through grade five, a middle school, grade six through eight, and a high school. The district is also responsible for the state's preschool program, currently serving eight hundred and sixty-five three- and four-year-old children. In total, the district was responsible for three thousand ninety-five pre-K through grade twelve students in the two thousand twenty-one school year. Although the existing high school building is adequate for current and near-term projected high school enrollments, it is the need for pre-K and elementary space that is greatest. District pre-K through five enrollment has increased one hundred and fifty-four percent since two thousand ten, two thousand and eleven. And the district's three elementary schools already losing dedicated learning space in order to accommodate twenty-one of the seventy pre-K classes are either at or near capacity. Thirty-nine pre-K classes are conducted at non-district facilities that are also at maximum capacity. As a result, the district houses twenty-one pre-K classrooms in its three elementary schools and ten at its collaborative, the Collaborative Early Learning Center. The proposed high school will be constructed on what is currently the high school athletic field. That field will be located on the roof of the new building. This four-and-a-half acre site is already owned by the district. No additional property will be purchased. If approved, work will begin in the latter half of two thousand twenty and completed in time for the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Because it is a new facility, there will be new construction to academic programs. During construction, cooperative arrangements will be made with area districts and universities as well as the city to accommodate high school athletic programs on their fields. I would now like to turn the presentation over to our trustee Alex Delatorre.
Thank you, Sharon. If approved at the public referendum, the two hundred and forty-one million dollar project will be financed by a thirty-year, two-point-two percent bond that spreads the debt obligation over three decades, sharing it with the future residents who will be using the school facilities over that entire span of time. The annual cost to property owners will be ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents per one hundred thousand dollars of the assessed value of their property. At this time, the Board of Education would like to introduce the architects on this project, Frank Tedesco and Eric Wood from the Mount Vernon Group.
Hello, I'm Frank Tedesco, president of Mount Vernon Group, and with me is Eric Wood, vice president. Mount Vernon Group, a little background, we've been around for about sixty-five years, and we're primarily K through eight school architects. Our home base is Massachusetts, but we've been in New Jersey and Newark for about twenty years. We do work in New York City. We've done four schools in Brooklyn, and we have four projects in Manhattan. We've also worked in the area, Union City, Jersey City, East Orange, Hoboken, of course, and several others. Primarily, we'd like to just say that our firm is a, is a school architecture firm, but we've also been the architect of record for Hoboken Board of Ed for the past fifteen years. Done a lot of the work around the city. We know the city, and we know the schools, so we've helped out. And we've been working on this project for, for some time, you know, through schematic, feasibility study and schematic design. But we'll be happy to answer questions as they come up. And I'd like to reintroduce Eric Wood, who's going to tell you a little bit about the project. Start with him.
We wanted to start with a video presentation, and then we can walk you through the proposed floor plans. No problem.
No problem. We don't have that much interesting to say, so. Thank you.
So now, we wanted to just walk you through the floor plans briefly. As Karen brought up earlier, the proposed high school will be located on the JFK Stadium site, going here. So we have the stadium fieldhouse, stands, football field, and the tennis courts.
I'll probably move around. Alright. So moving along to the the ground floor plan. This is at grade level. So the Jefferson Street, Columbus Park, 10th Street, Grand Street. The ground level, which is at grade, would have a parking garage that would be accessible to the district staff only. This would be entered here on Jefferson Street and through this entrance, which would be a card access reader. So there is 110 parking spaces, some of which would be for the electric vehicles, which would be a lead point. The building would be a lead gold facility. So with the 110 spaces and the exit to the garage would be located down here and then back out to Jefferson Street. On the eastern side of the site, we have two new tennis courts that would be accessible off of Columbus Park at this location and right here. There are two entrances to the school. The main entrance would be off of Jefferson Street and there's also a community entrance that would be accessible off of Columbus Park. In this area, I want to call up Stephen Hoyt of Pinoni Associates. He can talk a little bit about the civil aspects, especially the water. How would you, the detention, stormwater detention? So, so the existing courts were located in this area on the plan. So we have two, all of the tennis courts there are non-regulation size. So what is being proposed are two regulation-sized courts that would be covered, that would be community use. And then the basketball courts, as we progress into the plan to the next floor, I can show you what the plan is for the replacement of those basketball courts.
My name's Steve Hoyt. I'm with Pinoni Associates, a civil engineer that's been involved to this point. Due to the scale of the project, it exceeds one acre disturbance, so it triggers the NJDP, major development requirements, which means stormwater needs to be addressed. As part of this project, and there's a section view of the building later on, the parking's essentially at grade level. This building's also in a flood zone, so it's elevated higher than the DEP-recognized flood elevation, which lends itself to having this grade-level parking and also this gray box, which is, I don't know how I changed that. Sorry.
It senses it.
Apparently. Gray box, which lends itself to using it as a storage area for runoff generated by the upper levels of the building and the site features. So we were viewing this area as an opportunity to, if storage tanks for stormwater collects the runoff, detains it, which means it slows the release rate out to the infrastructure within Jefferson Street. Preliminary calcs, there's about 30,000 cubic feet of stormwater storage required to meet the DEP regulations. Obviously, we'd have to go through the full design to get there, but the intent is to be compliant with both the flood requirements as well as the stormwater requirements.
Thanks, Steve. So moving up to the first floor, and as Steve was saying, since this is in a flood zone, the first floor is elevated, the first floor level is at 15 feet above sea level. The designed flood elevation for this area is 13 feet above sea level. So coming up Jefferson is the main school entrance for the students. As I said earlier, the main community entrance for after-hours or activities would be located off the park here. At both those locations, there are secure entrances with secure vestibules. There are security stations located here on the Jefferson entrance and here on the Columbus Park entry. So a visitor would be coming into the school, check with the security guard, the security guard would check their credentials, see who they're there visiting, and then allow them into the administrative section. They would then meet with the person that they are there to see and then be allowed to have access into the school. So I'm going to focus on the community side first. Entering off of Columbus Park, you have the auxiliary gym. Sorry. Auxiliary gym, so that would be the replacement for the existing outside tennis courts. Not during school hours, obviously, because, but it would be a community-use gym and it would be used after-hours, weekends, depending on how the board wants to, you know, structure it, but it would be accessible to the community. Okay, okay. Okay. Next to your auxiliary gym is the natatorium or pool with boys' and girls' locker rooms. Below that is the hockey rink with stands and then locker rooms underneath the stands. The hockey would hold 500 spectators, the pool 300, the auxiliary gym 240. If you see, there's doors here, so during an event after school hours, this area can be completely segregated or secure from the rest of the school, so there would be no people penetrating into the school area during after-school hours. There's also a community room here for use. And then on the school side, we have the cafeteria, the black box theater with the music wing, so we have band, chorus, and MIDI lab, along with a number of assemblies and practice rooms. The main school auditorium, which seats 800, is located here with a set shop and theater arts classroom. On the lower portion of the plan, we have the high school gymnasium, which seats 600 students, or 600 spectators, culinary arts classroom and cafe, wellness center, OTP space on the first floor. Moving up to the second floor begins the classroom bar, so we have the general classrooms along Jefferson Street, along with some small group instruction, some special ed classrooms, and then the second floor houses all our general sciences and specialized science classrooms, including the science on a sphere, which you all saw in the video. The upper black box theater, upper auditorium, and on the eastern side of the school, you have the weight room, the halftime gathering area, which the concession stand and restrooms. So the people watching the events on the field would go down one level for the concession and restrooms. And the team locker rooms are located along this section of the school. The third floor is the field level. The stands for the field are located here, seating for 15, 50. And again, on this side, you have the double-loaded corridor with classrooms, and you'll see that repeated on the fourth floor, and then the art suite is located here with learning commons. I also want to point out, on the second, third, and fourth floors, you have a team area, so that is mostly used for students and faculty for smaller breakout spaces for students and learning spaces. On the fourth floor is our final classroom wing, along with the collaborative learning and activity center, which is the media center or library. So there's also some small group learning spaces in there, along with study rooms, and then the upper area with press box and security. The fifth floor houses a roofing terrace and the main mechanical penthouse, and then we have the solar panels on the upper roof, which also would lead to the lead gold, one of the lead gold aspects of the school. I want to bring up Beth Ann Grasso of Pinoni Associates to talk a little bit about the traffic study.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Beth Grasso from Pinoni Associates. We performed a traffic study to determine the impacts of the new school on the surrounding roadway network. Basically, we follow the methodology that's outlined in the ITE Trip Generation Model 10th Edition, which is the standard for studying this type of facility. We determined that a total of 417 new trips, that's 251 entering and 166 entering, will be added to the study area in the morning peak hour. Morning peak hour is between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. In the afternoon, 238 new vehicle trips will be generated, 95 entering and 143 exiting will be added, and that is from the hours 1:30 to 3:30, which is peak school hours, but is not peak traffic area, traffic hours where people are coming home from work. So the peaks are slightly offset. Okay, let's see. We then took those traffic trips and we distributed them throughout the system. I don't know if you can see, these are the intersections we studied, 1, 2, 3, 4, up to 8. We looked at 14 intersections all around the school. Oops. I don't think I was supposed to do that, but I did. It's no big deal. Couple of red lines. Okay. So we distributed those trips in proportion to the amount of trips there are now. In other words, if 10% of the traffic, say, comes to this intersection, we made sure that the new trips were distributed based on the percentages around the facility. And we determined that all the study intersections, all 14 of them, in existing condition operate at a level of service B or better. Level service means how long is the delay when you come into the intersection? It's ranked by level of service A through F, A, B, and the best, F not being so good. And we are level B, which is very good and very acceptable under the current standards. Then we looked at the 95th percentile queue. A queue is basically, if you stop at an intersection, how many cars are going to stop before you can get through it? So it's the length of people waiting in line. And we determined that, based on the available area and space for queues right now, that we do not exceed what's already there, what's allowed. Okay. In the build condition, we continue to operate as level of service B or better, and our 95th percentile queues are also not violated with the proposed. So we've determined that the proposed high school will result no significant degradation of overall intersection level of service and will not result a significant impact to traffic flow on the streets and the intersections around the proposed high school. Based on the comparison of the calculated peak parking demand generated by a proposed high school, we've determined that 85 additional parking spaces are required. And that includes teachers, staff, cafeteria workers, altogether 85 workers. And this proposal proposes 110 spaces. So therefore, all of the needs will put the parking underneath the building and will not need to utilize any spaces in the surrounding community. So that's pretty much all I have. Hold on, we'll answer all your questions, I promise.
And then, just to finish the presentation, we have a couple still objects, or still photos. Frank, do you have anything else to add?
Well, thank you, everybody, for your interest in the project. Once again, the referendum, the vote on the referendum will be held on Tuesday, January 25th. Polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at all regular polling places. They will all be open for in-person voting. Please be advised at the deadline to register for vote if you are not already registered. And this referendum is Tuesday, January 4th. City Clerk's office is open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for registration. In addition, there will be night hours available for registration on January 4th from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please note that in addition to tonight's board meeting, there will be three additional public meetings to learn about the proposed new high school and our long-range facilities plan. Those meetings will be held at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, which is on Clinton, Tuesday, December 21st, Thursday, January 6th, and Monday, January 17th. There will also be a virtual meeting on January 13th at 7:00 p.m. A link for the meeting will be posted on our website, www.hoboken.k12 nj.us. For any more questions and more information, we've set up an email dedicated to the project. You may send inquiries to, all one word, proposednewhhs@hoboken.k12 nj.us. At this time, when we get back up on the dais, we'll open the question and answer or question and comment section of the meeting. Just a reminder, if you wish to speak, you'll need to sign up with your name on the sheet. That was at the podium. You still need to do that, let us know. You'll be asked to state your name and your municipality of residence before you speak, and because we have so many speakers tonight, we will be strictly adhering to our regular five-minute rule. If you are approaching five minutes, let's say around 4 minutes 30 seconds, you will see me hold up my hand, and that will mean you have 30 seconds left. It will be very strictly adhered to tonight. Thank you very much. So I think that we're obviously going to take the speakers in the same way that they signed up. We have no idea who's going to comment and question, or just question, or just comment, so we don't want to make people do that now, so we'll just see how it goes with the order. Well, you'll have your five minutes, and if you'd like to ask more questions, we invite you to maybe come up again, or you can certainly send an email to us. Okay, okay, sure.
Okay, we just have one order of business before we'll get to the public comment portion. And when we do the public comment portion, if I could ask our professionals, Mount Vernon Group, et cetera, to maybe come up in front of the stage so that any questions that you may be able to answer, you'll be able to do so. At this time, before we do that, Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight? You don't? Nothing to read in? Okay. This month, the board did meet in committee meetings to discuss all agenda items. All meeting notes were shared with the board prior to tonight's meeting, and we were able to ask questions and share our thoughts with Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, and Mr. Callagie on the agenda items tonight. We will not be going into committee reports due to the nature of this meeting. So moving on to public comments on agenda items. Ms. Good, do you have the list?
I have the list.
Sure.
Okay, order Josh. I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. So I'm sorry if I do. I have Josh Einstein.
And as Ms. Katamatory mentioned, please state your name, your municipality of residence, business affiliation, if any, and you have five minutes to speak. Yeah, turn it over, you can.
My name is Josh Sotomayor-Einstein. I live at 606 Washington Street in town. The fly-by-night effort to push through a new community and sports center with a high school attached is a disgrace. From top to bottom, this effort to sneak in public meetings during the Thanksgiving-to-New Year's vortex, when the vast majority of voters are focused on close friends and family, and to rush an election when state statute provides many other possible referendum dates during the coming year is an abuse of democracy. Even for many supporters of the new high school, the way in which this endeavor to build a taxpayer hundreds of millions of dollars has been handled seems to be as underhanded, rushed, and opaque as possible. From little unnecessary and inexplicable lies or half-truths, such as the touting of two outdoor tennis courts, when in reality, the plan eliminates one of the three current outdoor tennis courts, to bold-faced propaganda that is cherry-picking data sets in order to manipulate a "historic enrollment increase" that does not exist, the boosters of this bad idea have been dishonest with the public from day one. While the bad idea boosters may pretend enrollment is up 25%, the fact remains that they chose enrollment from the year with the largest dip as their starting point, from the year before their chosen one. Enrollment is only up approximately 13%, in line with historic variation for decades. As John Koppish pointed out in a letter published in the Hudson Reporter, enrollment today is not at historical levels. There was no enrollment explosion in the recent past, nor is there one today. In fact, the BOE tax increase of almost 10% in 2020 was pushed partially under the narrative that the following year, this year's enrollment, would be up by hundreds of students. An estimated enrollment increase that the Board of Education got wrong by guessing 270 more new students than there actually were. Year after year, the district is consistently wrong on the next year's enrollment predictions, yet they expect the public to have confidence that they can make predictions for multiple years out. This bad idea, a pork-barrel spending program that with interest of 2.2% a year will cost over $400 million, to say nothing of the legacy costs of a new building, nor whatever cost will be incurred when it inevitably goes over budget, is not about the children in the district schools, nor is it about the state of the current high school built in 1962 with a then-capacity of 1,500, less than a third full, and which boosters of this bad idea maintain is good enough to be transformed into a middle school. The argument, inane and retrograde as can be, that new construction is a substitute for effective education and pedagogy, is an insult to all those hard-working teachers and families of those students currently in the school system. Boosters of this bad idea, a number of whom I am friends with, talk off the record and in hushed tones that the true motivation of this terrible endeavor is to attract children from wealthy families that currently go to private schools, that only after those families remain in the district school system well into high school will SAT and other scores go up. Of course, we're this fantasy world to exist in which parents who have means choose a school because it has a hockey rink and a pool rather than a better scholastic reputation, it would mean that the children of those already in the district would be neglected as the powers that be are pursuing other students they believe can bring up district test score averages rather than help the students they already have. This classicist bigotry of the lower-than-low expectations, that a shiny new building will attract a new pupil pool who will up the test scores, is yet another reason to say no. Would that the Board of Ed be asking for more money and support for teachers to teach their current students, to provide more effective pedagogy, and build up their results? That is what one day may attract wealthier families to keep their children in the district schools. Until then, this bad idea and its boosters, despite their efforts to whine and dine the community with a community and sports center with a high school attached, will only contribute to rising cost of living in Hoboken, further chase out the actual middle class in Hoboken with their children, remain just as empty as the current high school, and be a roadmap for future anti-democratic measures to push fly-by-night votes when the public is otherwise distracted.
We have a lot of names on this list, so I would like to respectfully ask you to save your applause until after we get through this list, okay? Because what it is...
Next speaker, Ms. Good?
Maureen Sullivan. Maureen Sullivan, you're next.
I live at 213 14th Street in Hoboken. I'm a former school board member, and my children went to Wallace and Connors back in the day. I read this information, the charts that were online, and I was embarrassed for you. Do you realize how bad your math is? Exactly. Let me, I don't know, it's in the middle school curriculum to learn how to do percentages. Play along, pull out your calculators if you want. The population of Hoboken has increased 180% since 1990. According to this, the population in 1990 was 33,000-plus. It's now 60,000-plus. Off the top of your head, mental math, does that sound like it's more than doubled? No, the population has increased 81%. The next one says district pre-K-12 enrollment has increased 127% over the past 10 years. You don't give numbers on your bar graph, but I estimate it, 2,700 to 3,100. That's 15%. Pre-K-5 enrollment has increased 154% in 10 years. Again, I'll estimate the numbers, 1,900 to 2,200. Play along, you can do it in your head, 15%. I have absolutely no idea where you got these numbers. And we know that none of us knew anything about this. This wasn't on an agenda, this wasn't in the minutes. Y'all were working on this behind the scenes, and nobody, nobody, I mean, you could pick this up and figure out that you're terribly, terribly wrong. In K-12 enrollment 20 years ago was 2,171. 2019 to 2020, 20 years later, it was 2,233, K-12 in the district. The population during that time went from 38,000 to 60,000. That is a 57% increase in population. And you know what the school enrollment went up K-12? Less than 3%. Less than 3%. You keep talking about a tidal wave. You know, it's like hashtag tidal wave in Hoboken. If you did the numbers right, there is no tidal wave. In 20 years ago, there were 607 students in the high school. Now it's 426 or so. It's decreased 30% in 20 years in the high school. Yet we need a new high school, tidal wave, tidal wave. It's ridiculous. Maybe if you had opened this up to more people, that would have helped. I saw nothing about any of these hires. Architects, I went back through the agenda, went back through the minutes, couldn't find anything, except that you hired Bond Council, Bond Council. The traffic study was done in February. The architects said they'd been working on this a long time. What was the secret? Why was this a secret? The building is designed for a student population of 860, so you'd have to double it. An independent demographic analysis commissioned by the board and based on reasonable projections of city population and enrollment projections concluded that this will be adequate for at least the next decade. You hired an independent demographic analysis? You hired somebody? Who was that? I'd love to know who that was, who can't do math. I hope that the architects are better at math than the board, because the building will collapse if they use the same math that you use. Thank you.
Next person is Paul. Paul, I can't read your last name, starts with a P.
My name is Paul Presensano. I'm a 25-year resident. I live at 218 Hudson Street with my wife and my son Aiden. Children are paramount in any discussion when it comes to education. But when you put those two together, it's a very difficult puzzle to solve. And my hat's off to many of you that do that on a daily basis, and to the teachers in the system. But there's one thing, good governance informs its citizens, and it listens to its citizens. We've had no chance to give any feedback on this. There's a referendum on January 25th, and some of us, it's the first time hearing about this. I ask, and I beg, for you to have info sessions in every single ward. There's one thing you have to think about. We have a senior population in this town, and we have working parents. And to get across town, it's very difficult during those hours. So therefore, I implore you to use the city council and any means necessary to have these extra meetings to make sure that the voters are informed. A quarter of a billion dollars is not something to be rushed. I am neither for nor against this until I see all the answers to questions that I have put forth in the public forum. I will email you those tomorrow. I'm not expecting you to answer all 26, 27, but it's just something for us to start thinking about. This has far-reaching impacts on taxes for 30 years, which I plan to be here for the next 30 years, so I'm paying full vig on this one. It has impact on affordability and the makeup of the town that my wife, myself, and my son will learn to love. I implore you, please use every resource available to educate the community so that they have an informed decision. I will personally offer any help that I can give you to help you take this momentous task ahead of you. Anything you need me to do, you can reach me, you'll have my email in a day or two, and I will be willing to help you any way possible. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Manuel Rivera, a son of Hoboken, born and raised, did go to the high school, five generations have been in that high school, from my aunt to my great-great niece. So yes, we do need better facilities there, we need things to get better. But we do not need a rushed building with, you know, millions of dollars being spent without the proper notification to the public. My question is, why, if this august body had the foresight, right, to get a date on January 25th, but yet you were not able to tell the public in this past election cycle that we could have avoided the money that you're going to spend on a referendum, add the tax burden to the people? That is not fair. That is not fair. And I ask everyone to, before you make your vote, ask these questions. I ran, the election could have been different, even your board members. Your board members here had that knowledge and did not give it to the people, those that ran, okay? And I'm asking you, the public and the people, let's join together. Let's not be adversaries. Let's talk, like I said when I was running. Let's have a dialogue with the people, as well as the people who are going to build this complex. Let us know more details. I ask this as a person who is deeply frustrated. I've lived in this town all of my life, like I just mentioned. Promises, 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 and nothing happens. One little change, maybe for the upper class. The lower class, the middle class, always gets to work harder to make the upper class a little bit better. There's nothing wrong with having good folks here, but we need to really work on the message. And the message is very important. And to have as well, an administration backing this also makes it feel uncomfortable. An administration that has nobody to hold them accountable, not the council, which they say that they're not rubber stamps? Well, they should prove it as well here, in this issue, that they're not rubber stamps. Because to me, it hurts me to have spent time, energy, months after months, talking to the people, when I didn't have another thing to explain to them, okay? So I ask you all to please come back at a later date. Maybe you can change the 25th of January. Perhaps you can't, you paid the money, I don't know. But we have to have more communication. I know there are going to be more dates, you're going to see me again, but as other people have said, it is time to have more communication with the people. And I know that everybody here is well-intentioned, I'm sure of it, but communication is very, very important to all of us. We ask you to please let us have more input, give us more time. Maybe, maybe it's a better opportunity in the future, because this has a price tag now that could be higher next year, the following year. We don't know if the pandemic expands two, three more years, if we can get the steel from wherever it's coming, you know what I mean? So I ask you to have patience, to please give us time to look at this further. I understand the well-intentions, but the people need clarity, especially the people who will benefit from this, and as well as the people who have to work there. Because I'm also hoping that you have a plan on hiring, when this does come to fruition, people who live in Hoboken and need jobs. Because you're going to need people to monitor the green spaces that are going to be there. You're going to need people to maintain the pools and stuff like, or we're going to have to hire another contract people to do all of those jobs and pay more money. So those are my questions. Don't know if you could answer them all, but I would appreciate if you at least could attend some of them. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Eduardo Gonzalez, Hoboken resident. I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. The first one being, so since we're in Abbott District or an SDA District, I'm curious how we're able to float a bond, being that other boards of ed that are Abbott Districts or SDA Districts have publicly stated that they can't, because it's illegal, because the SDA is supposed to be paying for... is supposed to be paying for any new facilities. The next question is, if we do issue a bond, is our Abbott funding then at risk? Is that pre-K funding that is fully funded by the state, is it at risk? And then has legal counsel given an opinion stating if it is or if it's not at risk? The other question is just, I'm curious, and I hope some analysis has been done by the business administrator or the NW Financial as to the continuing costs of the proposed new high school. In particular, maintenance costs, added cost of electricity, the ice rink, assuming you're going to have to buy a Zamboni, personnel, new maintenance people, et cetera, et cetera. So even though you're going to have solar panels, they might be LEED certified, something, it'll probably still be an increased cost of several million dollars to the current tax burden. And then the next is just a statement that I just want people to realize when they go into the voting booth, and all these numbers are publicly available on the Hoboken Board of Ed's website, but the total cost of the bond is actually over $332 million, not the $241. And that's when you account for the interest and the principal. So that means that the annual debt burden is over $11 million, and that's been confirmed already by the business administrator. The most recent budget passed by the Hoboken Board of Ed has a tax levy of over $53 million. So simple math tells us that this $11 million is going to have to be added to the $53 million tax levy. And then when you do that, that means the tax levy then is going up by over 21%. So I just want everyone to be aware that when they go into the voting booth, like it, hate it, whatever you press, just be aware that you're not only voting for the high school, but you're also voting for a 21% increase in the tax levy. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask when they're going to answer. Yeah, we're not getting answers, we're just talking. That's what I thought. They're just looking at us. Cheryl Fallic, I live in Hoboken. My first question is, why, this gentleman told us he's been working with this Board of Ed for some time. Why didn't you let anybody know? Why was that withheld from the public? And then after, you know, in November, whatever, hey, there's going to be a vote in, you know, eight weeks. Can somebody please answer that question? Why was the public completely...
I mean, they have been our architect of record for 15 years. We've always discussed enrollment issues in all of our buildings.
Sorry to interrupt, Ms. Engley. He said I've been working on this plan with this school board for a while.
We have talked about our long-range facilities plan for quite some time. As our enrollment has been increasing, that's something that's our responsibility to look to the future to...
Yeah, so there's a finished plan. Where was the community? I mean, it is Hoboken after all. Where was the community? This is the thing that I'm having the hardest time here.
Can we talk about...
Because you come up with a full plan without any community input. We don't move it, we don't like plants of flower without 12 community meetings. And then we have, I'm actually rising to tell you to vote no on this bond on January 25th. I don't think that the ballots have been printed yet. You can move it to another election because I'd really like to understand how we got from, well, we need more space, to $241 million project. And I'd also like to understand why we're on the hook for all of it. I thought there was some kind of state funding. Did you guys try to get some funding? Because we know it's not 241 in the ed. There's the interest, there's the overrides. You know, our Washington Street design was supposed to be 14, it ended up 20, you know, and our Resiliency Park was supposed to be 35 million. Now it's almost 100 million. So we know it's more than that.
Do we want to talk about what's built into the cost? Who's best to speak about that?
Or why there's no state funding or some funding from some other source other than the taxpayers of Hoboken?
I'm going to roll it in, if it's okay with you.
Roll it in.
I'm going to roll it in to help answer Mr. Gonzalez's question.
That's fine, that's fine.
And then we'll roll it into yours as well.
Okay. There's a lot of, I mean, it feels like it was completely sprung on us. And I'm like somebody who would want to be supportive of something for the public education, but I kind of feel like, and it's totally a feeling, it feels like some sort of demographic engineering, like we're not so happy with our data, our statistics, so let's attract some other kids. And that almost feels like you're leaving more children behind. If the children need more help, my understanding is we have a ratio of nine students to every one teacher. That's a ratio that private schools would envy. I know that's where I was educated. So something else is going wrong here, and it feels like we're going to throw money at this shiny new object and not deal with whatever help our students may or may not need. And I hear the school system is getting better, I hear it's terrible, I don't really know. But if the data says we need improvement, or we are improving, let's keep improving. It just seems throwing 241 million... I totally feel blindsided by the lack of transparency. It feels corrupt. It also feels like it hurts everything else in the community. For example, we have redevelopment happening, or discussion of redevelopment in the housing authority, there's a lot of suspicion there. And when something like this happens here, it's like they're all corrupt and you can't trust them. And that's how I feel. And I just feel like maybe you want to repair the damage to how a lot of people in the community, other than folks who might not be concerned about another $100 on every $100,000 of taxes that they're paying. Because it doesn't really seem like anybody's actually taken into consideration that that may literally push some people out of town, and we're sick and tired of having that happen. So, you know, yes, we want the best education for our children, but the best education doesn't necessarily come with the most expensive project you could possibly come up with. James, please vote no, push the vote back.
Sheila Brennan.
Before the next speaker, you can come on up, but before you speak, just to address one of the technical questions, I think it was asked regarding the Abbott school status. I think it's easy to kind of answer that and at least put that onto an FAQ so we have it. So the question came up, can a former Abbott district go out for a bond? Isn't there supposed to be a mechanism for that? So there actually is a mechanism, it's the SDA. And typically, the SDA is supposed to fund projects for former Abbott districts. Unfortunately, what has happened over the years is they have had money, they've run out of money, they've had money, they've run out of money. Recently, they came out with some news that they have additional funding. That additional funding that they have has equated to about $300,000 for the Hoboken School District to do some renovation work. If the SDA does not have a large enough amount of money dedicated to your particular school project, they will allow you, the district, or the former Abbott, to go out for a bond. So it's not that you can't, it's not that it's illegal, it's that if the SDA cannot fund the project, the SDA has had a list of projects that they have not been able to fund. However, the one thing that they did notify us on is that they have a particular amount of money dedicated to the renovation of this building. So little over $30 million to renovate this building. But they do not have enough money earmarked for the building of a building, knocking a building down, rebuilding it, that they don't have. But they did earmark the Demarest School Building as one that's in our district that has the ability to be renovated. They started off in the Connors Building, but because of the flooding in that area, they shifted those funds to the Demarest School Building. So with three of the five buildings in the district built like over 100 years ago, the building that they selected to put that money toward was the Demarest School Building. So with that being said, that the Demarest School Building as part of the district's long-range facilities plan would come on board as a fourth elementary school. That's how it was kind of worked with those funds. They let us know, we did talk about that originally when they first notified us at public board meetings that we were going to be given this funding. But what they are doing now is kind of holding off when they're doing that work. Each year, we kind of went through, they were holding off, holding off. So right now, it's probably about two years away, maybe even three, by the time they provide the district with the money and start doing it. They have already done some environmental studies around this building. But from an Abbott standpoint, a district can actually do a bond. The other thing is, the Abbott status is obtained as a result of an overall ruling, a court ruling. And so taking away Abbott status would not happen unless there was an overturning of that rule. So from that standpoint, this project doesn't necessarily have any impact on the preschool budget, or the preschool funding. So that's one thing that I think we can kind of put in that FAQ, make sure that everyone feels comfortable, that those two things aren't necessarily related. And the district does have the ability, or any former Abbott's do have the ability to bond for projects if they so need. So I feel I have to show that there's a lawyer that has a background in the county of the... Charles, can you help with that? What's that? Yeah. Yeah. Yes, so we have bond council, we also have school board council. That, other districts have bonded for projects before. The preschool funding is separate and apart from the bonding, it's not associated with your former Abbott status. It's just, they're two separate things.
Cheryl? Oh, I'm sorry. Sheila Brennan.
Hi, I'm Sheila Brennan. I live at 719 Adams here in Hoboken. I recently ran for city council at large and talked to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people all over town, and most people were concerned about flooding, overdevelopment, and parking, things like that. The one thing that I was not able to talk to them about, and I wish I had been, is this $241 million plan to build a shiny new thing that we don't appear to need, based on the data available to us right now. I am absolutely incensed that the school board kept it from us during the election. Not a peep out of anybody, not any kind of heads up that we're working on this plan. Not a peep. They call that... They call that a lie of omission, okay? And you're all guilty of it, and shame on you. So while I want to keep an open mind about this, I have to say, my confidence in you guys is absolutely shattered because we've been, it's been kept from the public, and having this, you know, series of four or five meetings in the run-up to a quick hurry-up-and-vote on January 25th is just, this is not democracy. This is not how we do best for children. And honestly, I urge you all to vote no, take a step back, and let's, as other speakers have said, let's actually involve the community in the planning of this thing. And maybe we need it, maybe we don't, and maybe it'll look completely different if you allow the community to have input into it. Thank you.
James Castalone.
Good evening, members of the board. Very pleased to be here in Demarest School, built about 110 years ago, I think. Reminds me of my own elementary school. If I recall, this was the high school for Hoboken at that time, and Frank Sinatra himself even attended and perhaps walked across this stage. Like to think that old Blue Eyes would be pleased with the direction of the school system since he was here. My understanding is that the newly proposed high school represents the first new school building to be built in the district in over half a century. It's certainly normal for districts to be building new facilities periodically. Hoboken has gone a long time without one. Of course, part of the space crunch that we're experiencing comes from the fact that previous boards are not thinking clearly about the future directions of the city, sold off several school buildings 20 or 30 years ago. And if we had those, we'd be in a much better situation. Very pleased to hear that the SDA is devoting a large chunk of money for the renovation of Demarest. As we've seen, the growth in the school, especially at the lower grades, has been substantial, and there is a true space crunch now enveloping the district. And that is in part because the district has become a district of choice with a very high-quality core of teachers, outstanding academic programs, excellent support services, and great leadership. We've seen a growing confidence in the district represented by the growth of people looking to send their children for a quality education. In fact, a friend of mine recently moved to the South and complains about the quality of the school district down there as being far substandard to the near-private school environment she describes that she had here in the Hoboken Public Schools. Hoboken still has a very diverse body, which reflects student body, which reflects the broad diversity of the nation as a whole. And certainly, our students here deserve the same state-of-the-art facilities that students in suburban school districts have as well. Furthermore, the proposal seems to me to be a creative solution to some difficult problems. We know, of course, that there is no purchasing of additional property involved, and we've seen this concept of using the roof as an athletic field work well in Union City. Furthermore, interest rates are extremely low, so now is the time to engage in bonding for these types of long-term capital investments. And in fact, we have to view this properly for what it is, investment in the future, not only of our students, but of the city and the community as a whole. I view it as a clear example of initiative taken for the public good, which is a concept which seems to have fallen out of favor. But I want to thank the board for the vision, for looking to the future of the district. And I look forward to the information sessions at which I and other members of the public will be able to have all of our questions answered in full. So, thank you.
Mary. Mary, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, I'm too sorry.
Andrea, that's okay.
How do you pronounce it?
It's Andrea, the J silent.
Andrea, thank you.
Okay. First of all, am I supposed to speak on the opinion? I mean, there's two signatures there, and I have questions. So what should I speak at this moment? You've got it on the bond and you've got a public portion. Are you not letting us speak twice?
Agenda items only. Whatever's on the agenda is what you signed up on this list to speak about.
Right, I understand that, but I'm signed up twice.
And that's fine. One is on agenda items and one is general public comment.
Okay. All right, first of all, the architects, I don't remember your name, Devon, I believe? Devin? I'm sorry? No, no, not your personal name, the company, the architect. Okay, Mount Vernon Group. Okay, I've been to tons... Okay, I've been to tons and tons and tons. My name is Mary Andrea, 159 Ninth Street. I've been to tons and tons and tons of zoning board and planning board meetings.
Excuse me, before you proceed, can you please put your mask up?
Sure.
Thank you.
I've been to many meetings, and they usually have a shadow study, a shadow study, they usually have an engineer's report, the, of course, with the filtration with the water, since it's in a floodplain, they would have all that kind. Your demonstration was one of the most inadequate and quick presentations I've ever sat through. I'm stunned. You guys have got to learn to do it a little bit better. You really do, I'm sorry. I can insult you, because I, as the public, deserve better. Okay. All right, because the taxpayers are paying for this, I truly feel very deceived. So my first question is, why have you kept this secret? I learned about it in the Jersey Journal after the election. Why?
Do we want to talk about dates and approvals by the DOE? And do we want to, you want to finish your questions, and then we can address them? Why don't we do that?
No, you've got to stand up to this and answer it honestly. Why? All of you, why? Please. Why? I've lost all credibility with every single one of you. I don't trust you. You're lying to me. All of you. All right. You refuse to answer it? That's all right, that's all right. They refuse to answer it. They're cowards. All right, now. The candidates couldn't even speak about this when they were running. The proposed athletic sports complex, oh, excuse me, high school. That includes 27 multipurpose classrooms, 11 specialized learning classrooms, six special education classrooms. So I'd like to know what was the difference between the 11 specialized classrooms and the six special education classrooms? I don't know. I'd like to know why. There are eight science laboratories, a biomedical lab, engineering science lab, aquaponics, science sphere lab, so that makes one, two, three, four, five, that makes 13 labs. Now, the sports section rooms include gymnasium, regulation-sized basketball court, wellness studio, and occupational physical therapy room, weight room, auxiliary gymnasium, ice skating rink, two regulation-sized exterior tennis courts, multipurpose turf athletic field with six-lane perimeter track, indoor pool. Now that sounds like a sports complex to me. What about math, literature, languages, and democracy classes? We live in a global world, a global world. And I bet the Chinese, German, Swiss, Swedes, French, and Arab schools, to name a few, are not emphasizing sports as their main draw to their high school educational systems in the 21st century. The Jersey Journal, on Thursday, December 9, 2021, article, "Inside Slick $241 Million School," first paragraph states, "Entering the proposed $241 million Hoboken High School would feel much more like walking into a decked-out athletic complex than the public schools most Americans are accustomed to." This looks like a sports complex in sheep's clothing. The second paragraph reads, quote, "Much of the first floor would in fact be somewhat petitioned off from the rest of the school to offer the public direct access to the hockey rink, pool, and two theaters via its own community entrance in the rear. Plus, we all know that the price tag that some developer puts down on the original proposal never is the cost at the end of the project. The Washington Street redesign, I followed it for three years, went from $14 million to plus $20 million. You can talk to Jim Doyle, he'll verify that if you don't believe me. And then we have the supply chain problem in securing construction materials due to the new world we live in, due to the two years of COVID-19. Many construction projects have stopped due to the lack of supplies and higher costs to procure what they need to build. Supply chain problems with cargo container ships will persist." I will speak. If you think all of this will be resolved before they even put the first shovel in the ground, you're sadly mistaken. Therefore, I do not believe that the price tag of $241 million, I believe, is a misnomer. Please, who do you think you're kidding here? Since the taxpayers have to foot the entire bill for 30 years. Now, how many of you will be alive in 30 years? How many of you will even live in this town in 30 years? Most people leave it. And you know very well it does.
Okay, Ms., your time is up. I think you're signed up for the second portion, so...
All right, I will go on then.
Thank you.
Dan Timson? Dan Timson?
Board of Education members and citizens...
You know what, I think we're getting a little off track. Can you please state your name, your municipality of residence?
Oh, sorry, sorry about that, sorry about it. My name is Daniel Thompson. I live at 230 Park Avenue, Hoboken, New Jersey. Board of Education members and citizens of Hoboken, there are three reasons this project to build a huge new high school is a bad idea. First, the loss of space, light, and air in and around the huge field and tennis courts that are currently open, empty, and used for sports. It will be completely filled with a multi-story school building will create environmental damage to the city of Hoboken, in particular, to the neighbors who live in the blocks surrounding the proposed new building, and to all those who spend time in or around the adjacent Columbus Park. Second, there is no substantial benefit in that there are actually fewer students to be occupying the new, huge, and mostly empty enclosed building than were occupying the original Hoboken High School, which is still fully functional. Third, the cost to each property owner in increased taxes far exceeds any benefit, according to my calculation of the cost per property taxpayer for the bond debt of $241,50,000 for the project to build the new Hoboken High School. Assuming, first, that the bond debt for project to build the new Hoboken High School is $241,000, second, the repayment of the bond debt will occur over 30 years, third, the interest rate for repayment of the bond debt is 2% per year, I know that's a little low, sorry about that, and fourth, Hoboken has 53,000 residents occupying a maximum of about 20,000 housing units, apartments, condos, houses, et cetera. Then, the total taxpayer bond repayment, including the bond debt and 30 years of interest, ends up being $315,775,000, which requires a total payment of $15,788 over 30 years for each of the 20,000 property owners, which translates into an average of at least $526 per year for 30 years for each Hoboken property taxpayer, sorry. My primary concern is that it is obvious that the monetary and environmental costs to our town far exceed any benefits, and that this huge and unneeded new school creates more benefits for developers and the politicians they support, and to the detriment of the environmental and the financial health of Hoboken and its citizens. Thank you.